Good evening and welcome to the October 24th, 2017 Meeting of the Board of Education. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public input for the 2018-19 budget development. Do we have anybody signed up or would anybody like to provide feedback on that? Okay. The next item on the agenda is our showcase of student work, Sources of Strength. Marie?
Okay, I'm very pleased to welcome a team from the high school who is going to share some information about this wonderful program that is now in its second year. Mrs. McManus looks like is going to take the lead on introducing the team and telling us about this program. So Anne Marie, it's all yours.
Great. Well, thank you for having us. I'm excited to have you hear about this wonderful program and these wonderful participants in the program and what we've been doing. So Sources of Strength is a research-based national suicide prevention program started in North Dakota in 1998 by Mark Lamurray. It was further developed and supported by the University of Rochester to become a national and global peer leader initiative that promotes prevention of suicide, bullying, and self-harm through positive strengths and supports. Gilderland High School first partnered with Sources of Strength this past January with the first training of adult advisors and peer leaders. This October, founder Mark Lamurray came to the high school to train our new peer leaders. All peer leaders were nominated by staff and students for their leadership and own strengths they demonstrate that would be in alignment with the mission, vision, and goals of Sources of Strength. Currently, we have trained over 150 peer leaders and 38 adult advisors. In order for the initiative to be considered a success, there is a recommendation that 10% of the student body be trained, so we are close to that goal and will continue to work on ways to promote Sources of Strength and invite peer leaders and staff to be part of the program.
So now we're going to have a video advertisement that last year's peer leaders started and created for us to spread the word about Sources of Strength.
We are Sources of Strength.
We are a group of diverse students and adults from many different corners and cultures of our school and community.
We believe that life has ups and downs, that all of us will go through good times and tough times. Our mission is to ensure that during the rough times, no one gets so overwhelmed or helpless that they want to give up.
Our mission is to spread hope, help, and strength into every corner of our community.
Our mission is to help students and staff turn to their strengths and their supports that are all around.
We are connectors to help and strength.
Our mission recognizes that our voice has great power and we use it to break the silence when someone is struggling and connect them to the help that they need and deserve.
We spread hope by focusing on stories of strength rather than stories of trauma.
We know our most powerful impact comes from our personal actions, conversations, and messages that use our music.
Our art.
Our writing.
Our activities.
Our social media.
Our culture and our voice.
This gives life to our effort.
We are Sources of Strength.
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 Good evening. I'm Justina Musa. I'm a senior at Gilderland High School. I was part, I was nominated to be part of Sources of Strength last year, and if I could be honest with you right now, I can say this program has really impacted me in a very positive way. Last year and through this year, I was dealing with my dad passing away, and I've made some really great friends that I can say they're going to be lifelong friends. For example, Sally who's over there, who I love dearly, she's always been there for me. My dad passed away actually the beginning of this school year, but all last year I was dealing with him being sick. And if I can say one thing is that Gilderland is one of those schools where it's just so community-based that everybody's just always here and always friendly and always just supportive. I have really great mentors, one of them being Ms. McManus, Mr. Dvorak, even Mr. Ward all the way over there. He's always cracking down on me just because I know he wants me to be the best that I can be. I just can say that this committee, this, I can't even, I don't even know what to describe it, is just something so positive and something that I feel like every school needs because it's just one of those things that you find great people, you meet great people, you just involve yourself with positive people, and just, it just, it's just something that can really just impact everyone in a great way. So one of my things are positive friends as well as mentors, and like I said before, I've met some great people here and I can say that these people are going to be lifelong friends forever. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sally King, and I'm going to speak a little bit about generosity and healthy activities. Generosity is a very significant source of strength for me. I think that when we think about generosity, we usually picture holding the door for someone or helping someone with a certain task, but I think it's really about a lot more than that. It's about being generous with your time and with your care and with your support and sitting down with someone and asking them if they're okay, and these are things that I see happening every day here. And it's honestly, it makes me really happy when I wake up that I can come to school here because I see things like that. Speaking of generosity, thank you, Justina. Healthy activities, that's another thing I think Gilderland is really great at providing the students with. It doesn't, it's not just limited to athletics, healthy activities. For me, it's music. For a lot of students, it's arts. But I think whatever brings you joy and whatever makes you proud to be a part of it, that's, that's a healthy activity and that's also a source of strength. So I say thank you to all the people that help us to have those sources of strength in our lives as students.
I'm Fabronia, it's me again. So medical access, a lot of times when we're physically healthy, that allows us to be able to take care of our mental health. So mental health and medical access are really related in that they depend upon one another. So in terms of medical access, we have a great nursing staff here and a lot of times, you know, if people aren't feeling well, they can go there and they, and it's really helpful to have, to have those kind of, that access to that outlet for, for physical health struggles. And also, you know, any teacher that sees that you're not feeling well will probably mention something and make sure you're okay. So there, that kind of a community and that attention to, to us as people, not just as students or as, you know, as learners, but as people who need to be healthy in general is really important and really helpful to us throughout the school day. And in mental health, we have a new addition to our counseling staff, Doc, and that has been a big hit for, for all of us. I know he came into my homeroom a couple, last week, I think, and it was really great because it's, everybody loves dogs and, and that's a great source of mental health. We also have a great counseling staff that's always open, they always have open arms for anybody who wants to come and talk and just, you know, get something off their chest or anything like that. And all of these things, and not just mental health and medical access, can be seen throughout all the teachers here, which is probably one of the greatest things that personally I've seen is that you know that any teacher that you interact with is going to care about you, not just as a student or someone who needs to get a certain grade, but as, as someone who is, is a whole person and, and they watch out for those things like medical access and mental health.
Hello.
I'm Raven. I'm a sophomore, pretty new to this, so a little nervous. Um, on the wheel, I have family support and that's really just about like having someone to go to that's really close to you, and a lot of times it doesn't even have to be family, but you can go to them, someone you know is not going to judge you and just be there, um, things you can, things you need help with. And the other one I have is healthy activities and we're trying to get like people to like do things that make them smile, like even if it's just taking a walk or listening to music or just using something positive like a sport to take out the negativity of your life and. Yeah, thanks.
I'm Sohan and I'm a freshman in Gilderland High School and I'm going to be talking about spirituality. So being spiritual is not only just meditating, but it's, it's a way that, it's a great way that copes with depression and anxious and feeling anxious. Meditating is one great way to, is to be spiritual. It, it relieves a lot of stress in your life and sources, a big part of the, the wheel is spirituality.
Okay, hello, I'm Matt Creighton. This is my second year in the program and I'm here to talk about the narrative of Sources of Strength and where we've come from, since this is only the second year of our program. And I can talk about, at the first training over, back in January, a lot of the students were kind of skeptical of what the program is because a lot of times when we hear the word like suicide prevention or mental health, we tend to table those conversations and we tend to be very quiet and we kind of shy away from what that is. And so I think after the first training, once the student body kind of learned what the program is, what they stand for, and how it's more than just a suicide prevention program, but just something for kids who've had a bad day or a bad test, or they just need, excuse me, a friend or some other shoulder to lean on, that's really what the program is. So what we did is we had a leader come from the headquarters of Sources of Strength based in Rochester, and they came for the day to have a number of faculty and students take the day off to do a training and good fun. One of the pictures we made, a little human pyramid, just being a little silly, but again, that just shows the extent to which we can get almost any student from any grade in the building, put them together here in the LGI for this training and then build a positive relationship amongst them. Yeah, again, it was just, just the day, a lot of faculty and students for the second year. We actually had more students come and more faculty, just to again, spread awareness of what the program is and how it's affecting each and every one of us, perhaps not in a state of depression, but just something to boost us throughout the day because we know high school could be a very challenging time for a lot of different kids for a lot of different reasons, and just coming to high school can be a struggle for some, and then succeeding in high school can be a struggle for others. And so if we can bridge the gap between all of these different students and give them a positive network, we think that's really beneficial. That's what the training was all about.
What I like about the training is it's not a program where it's talking at students. It's very interactive. It intertwines with the facts about suicide prevention and how they have strengths among themselves to promote the program. So they do like, you said, crazy activities and then all of a sudden we'll break down and we'll talk about, okay, what are next steps or what does your wheel look like and how do we help students identify what their wheel can look like? So last year, we broke up into subcommittees. We still have those subcommittees this year, and the adult advisors will lead certain subcommittees. So we have things like the Sources of Strength Week where we promote what this wheel is. We have students come up and what we did was we had them fill out little cards about who might be their mentor, who might be their healthy, what might be their healthy activity, what might be their family support, and then we decorate the long hallway with them. But we did this for a couple of days. We also had some sign-ups just on what is mental, mental health, what is medical access, what does that mean? We gave out some tattoos as well to help promote the, the wheel of Sources of Strength. Last year, we also did a peer leader and adult trainer breakfast to bring the group together. It's really important that the group not only have the subcommittees to work on and kind of break out, but also to bring us back together as a larger group. So we had a breakfast just to bring the kids together. We play a little game, talk about how it's going, what do we need to do to keep promoting the message of Sources of Strength.
Tom Dvorak, high school counselor, thank you. One of these events that we did was the photo booth, which was a lot of fun, and we did it around prom season as a healthy activity celebration as well as positive friends. Some, some prom dates were doing it before and after what they looked at at school and what they were doing, or what they're, when they were all gussied up at the prom. But it was another way for us to address what's happening with Sources of Strength. You could see that they were having a really great time with that and trying to get the concept.
So this was actually my personal first experience with Sources of Strength. I was recommended, I think, at the end of last year, and this was the invitational lunch. And what we did was at the very end, we got into this huge circle and we just, we threw balls of string around and by the end of it, you could tell that, it was probably in need of a physics lesson, but it was this huge web of really tight string and it kind of demonstrated how we all have our own string to throw, we all have our own string that we need to catch, and through that interconnected web of, of help and support, we can hold each other up and, and that string will stay as tightly wound as it can be because we're all holding on from different sides. So that was, that was something that really stood out personally in my memory because it was my first training with Sources of Strength and it, it really drove home that point that we all have something to give and sometimes we're going to need to take as well, and that, that balance is what keeps us all together.
So this fall, we, in the beginning of the school year, we did the Spirit Rally. And I can just tell you guys this, as a senior, I've been through it all, freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior, and junior year, eh, junior year is rough, like it's not a joke. And one thing that really, you know, got me through junior year were my friends, were my family, were all these people that were in my lives. And also this, I don't know, I can't tell you guys this enough, Gilderland is just one of those schools that everyone is just together. It's just one of those schools that you can't, you can't come, I, I honestly come to school every day happy. You always see a smile on my face, like even when I'm in the worst mood, I just like, I see McManus yelling down the hallway, "Good morning!", and I'm just like, "Oh my God, here we go again." Another one of these things. And you know, it's just one of those places that you just can't, you can't, there's not negativity inside of it. So we did the Spirit Rally to show, not because, you know, we have the people who do Sources of Strength, the peer leaders who aren't in Sources of Strength, but we wanted the whole school to get the, to know what Sources of Strength is. You know, Sources of Strength isn't just about suicide, suicide prevention, it's more than that. It's about people coming together as one to make a better community for everyone. Because if you're connected, like Fab said, if you're together, it makes, it makes it just a better environment for everyone. Because there is going to be hassles, there's going to be things that are going to bring you down, but that's, at the end of the day, if you know, if you have someone to connect to and to be there with, you're going to get through it. And that's the most important thing. You're going to get through it at the end of the day. So we did the Spirit Rally and I know my, my, one of my close friends that I've known her for years, her name's Natalie Rousseau, she sang. And she sang, um, she sang, one of, if you guys know Frozen, one of the most famous songs, but Natalie, Natalie, she, she's a great singer, but she's nervous, she's always nervous. So even last year, I was up there with her, I had no business being up there, but I started dancing and we're, you know, just to make her feel comfortable. And she, she comes back to me, she goes, "If you weren't up there, I couldn't do it without you." And that really meant a lot to me because that's saying I helped her in a way that, you know, that I could have, what I could have done. It's not about what the next person could do, it's what you can do, and that's what you always have to think about, and that's what Sources of Strength is.
Hi, I'm Sydney Elmore. I'm a freshman here at Gilderland High School. I was, I am one of the new peer leaders from the October 6th training. I'm walking into Sources of Strength, I didn't know what it was about, I've only heard it from the Spirit Rally. I was new to the school, I was like, "Oh, what is this about?". And so when I got recommended, immediately I was like, "Well, you know, something else I can join here." And it, it was such a great experience and I would never take it back. We opened up, just playing a game to get to know each other since there's ninth through 12th graders and new teachers I've never met before. It was a good way to recognize faces and kind of build like a fun atmosphere, so it wasn't all serious as I thought it was going to be. It was really fun and inviting and just something, a big community. Our next challenge was to draw or write our sources of strength. Now, we all split up into groups and we wrote down like, and drew what are sources of strength. And it was really cool to see how a lot of people shared the same sources of strength. Music was a big one, especially in this group, or sports they play, or family, or teachers that helped them specifically. But we were also challenged to present this in a creative way. Some groups sang, for example, this group sang "You Are My Sunshine" because sunshine and music was such a big source of strength for them. And it was really cool because we all joined in and we just, it was just felt so unified and we just felt like such a big community. Other groups rapped, and like my brother up there, he was the one who was rapping for that group. But we also rapped, read poems, and played charades, and it was just a really fun way to show that we all have sources of strength from different wedges of the wheel. We also talked in one big group, going in detail about what each wedge meant and where we can pull our strengths and, you know, just to think about what our weaknesses was, which also tied into our small groups. We all split up into like 11 to 12 smaller groups, and that was my personal favorite of the whole experience because when you were talking in these small groups, there was such support and respect from everybody else. There were some people in my group I didn't know, but I was, felt safe enough to share stuff that some of my closest friends don't even know about me. But there's such support from them and that just made my day, it really did, and I just left this place with a smile on my face because I knew that this group was such a big community now and we, I felt so unified with these people and even with the old peer leaders. We also played some other games to, you know, break up the seriousness. We played one where we chose partner, made animal sounds, and then had to close our eyes and try to find our partner just by making this random animal sound. It was, it was hard, it wasn't easy, but it was just a fun way to tie some games back into what we learned here at Sources of Strength. We also learned like the basis of what Sources of Strength is, and one thing that really stuck with me is that we spread hope, help, and strength, and we tell stories of strength and not of trauma. And it was really about building people up, which personally I find amazing because, you know, when you're talking with someone, sometimes it tends to go down, but here at Sources of Strength, we build people up and we're there for them for support. I think there's like, we did one final wrap-up and ideas and brainstormed, which you'll hear later in the presentation. We all brainstormed ideas of how to spread Sources of Strength throughout the school and even like as small as just smiling in the hallway to people who are having a bad day, or to painting a mural on the wall, because we have tons of murals here at Gilderland, painting a mural of the different wedges that people can see when they're going to class. And then final wrap-up about what everybody loved and, you know, there wasn't, it was hard to choose what my favorite part about this whole thing was because every part was my favorite. It just, it was such a great day and I'm so glad I could be a part of Sources of Strength.
All right, so the purpose of our social media is really to spread the word about who we are and what we are, and I think that ultimately the goal for our program is that every student here knows what Sources of Strength is and that every student here can point to something on that wheel and say, "Yeah, I have that strength." And I think as long as we stay connected, that's a realistic goal. And social media, for, for people our age anyway, is, I mean, it's one of the, one of the best ways to, to stay connected. No, no, no. Right as I was saying that, I was like, "Oh, shoot." No, but it's, especially on social media for people our age, because there's a lot of negativity there too, and this is the opposite of that. But we try to use the social medias for raising awareness about events. We post a lot of pictures from our events. World Mental Health Day, we took that picture of Doc. So it really, it's, it's about spreading awareness. I think awareness is, is the goal for us.
And Mr. Dvorak?
Thank you. As a high school counselor, we like to say we save students in the short run and the long run. And while we'll still have to assess students for some pretty serious issues, Sources of Strength has literally changed how I work with students and it taught me a lot. And I think that it's, it's, if an old dog like me can learn some new tricks, I think is a good thing for us as a community. When I look at the wheel, I don't see the wedges as a people, I really see a very colorful pizza personally, but aside from that, Sources of Strength really is more three-dimensional and elastic if you think about that, well, for me personally, an example is family support is very much a large source of strength for myself. If someone's facing a serious illness, medical access is huge, so you've got to imagine that it works like that. The, really what I wanted to let you know is that it's a long-term thing that will help students and adults, quite frankly, in much longer after they leave us at Gilderland High School. It is, as you think about this week, the district is hosting a flu clinic. We don't do it in February, we do it this week to be really, as a preventative measure that keeps everybody healthy. So with that, we appreciate your support.
To close, where are we headed? Also, I just want to put a little plug in. Sources of Strength is connecting with the Gilderland Athletics Department, and next week we are doing a food drive as part of our Wedge of Generosity. We are having a little homeroom competition where the homeroom, the winning homeroom of who has donated most food will receive a breakfast in, as a thank you of gratitude. But again, our Sources of Strength is really, our goal this year is to say, "We are Gilderland strong, and we are strong as a community together and as one." And I said this in the final end. My name is Mrs. McManus, thank you for your time, and my sources of strength is Gilderland High School. Barbara?
How does this compare to what you used to do with NCBI? Do you still have that program and this is just an additional program?
We do still have that program. It's an additional program. NCBI tends to focus on breaking down barriers of tolerance and barriers of discrimination. Where Sources of Strength, they, NCBI will happen during the day and classrooms come down with our guidance department who still leads it. Where Sources of Strength is a nominated, you're nominated or self-selected by your peers or by staff to be part of this suicide prevention program, but they're both tools and resources to help students. Seema?
Is this just at the high school or do you guys like plan to move down to middle school too?
Excellent question. We are self-funded right now. We are at the middle school as well. They are, three of our counselors there came last year to the training. They have not yet trained with the kids though, yet. So they are explaining it to their faculty. We've done a lot of explanation to our faculty to just get their support. Last year, we had 13 adult advisors, this year we have now a total of 38. So the goal is that eventually, everybody will know Sources of Strength and the real big goal is that all of your adults in your building can be trained. I'm very proud to say that it's not just a teacher, it is a staff, adult advisors, because that's what's important, that our kids are, have impact and connection with everybody in this building. So, but the middle school is just on the brink of launching, so they have asked, they've been great, they've been asking some of our students to come down. We are actually going to be going down there. A lot of our students from Sources of Strength are going down to the Mix It Up Lunch on October 31st at the middle school to sit at some tables at the cafeteria and talk about Sources of Strength, to kind of start putting those seeds in their head. Because again, the idea, and Rochester right now, Sources of Strength, the national program based out of Rochester, is working on a elementary level program so that eventually dreaming would be a K-12 Sources of Strength. And if you notice in this room, we have them throughout the building right now, it's kind of, the way we've done with anti-bullying campaigns is that eventually kids will see this and completely know what it is. And that's why the Spirit Rally focused on, "What's your strength?", and everybody who presented there said it first, so we could start, we're marketing it, is what we're trying to do. Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming in. That was a great presentation. Okay, so the next item on the agenda this evening is the School Board Recognition. Marie?
Yes, we have another program of sorts today. This week is the School Board Recognition Week that we celebrate each and every year in October. In a minute, I will remind everyone about our wonderful tradition to recognize and thank our school board members, but first, I have a proclamation from the Governor of New York State that I'd like to read, so if you can bear with me. From the Executive Chamber, the Governor says, "Whereas each year, School Board Recognition Week is observed by more than 700 school boards in school districts throughout the Empire State, and whereas our state's public education system is designed to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to society in an ever-changing world, and whereas members of local school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education, as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education, recognizing that all children can be successful learners, especially when education is tailored to the individual needs of the child, and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are" are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district by working closely with parents, educational professionals and other community members to create the educational vision we all hold for today's students and those in the future. And whereas the members of the New York State local school boards respond to the educational needs of communities they serve and help ensure the solid foundation of our school system, in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our state's educational system and improve future prospects for our children. And whereas during October twenty-third through twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, special activities and programs will be held in communities across New York State in observance of school board recognition week and it is fitting to to join in acknowledging the commitment and contributions of members of local school boards. Now therefore, I am speaking for Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York. I do by proclaim October twenty-third through twenty-seventh, uh two thousand seventeen as school board recognition week. So please join me in recognizing the nine members of our school board who do so much for our children here in Gilderland. So we have a wonderful tradition here in Gilderland to say thank you to our school members and to really keep them as permanent parts of our school district for years to come by including a brand-new library book in each of the buildings in the name of each of our board members. And so our building principals who are in the back have uh library books that have been selected for each of our board members. You'll have an opportunity to take a look, but then they get placed right in the library and forevermore when students open this book, they will see your name in a special gold seal. So come forward, my uh awesome principals, to deliver your books.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Alright, thank you.
I wish the world copies would change the world and they persisted and they persevered and they were pioneers. I hope you enjoy it.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Great, thank you very much. That was very nice. If you want to take these books home and read them, you can bring them back.
Absolutely.
At a later date. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment number one. Linda, I don't see any. Um and now we will move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from the October third meeting, the CPSC and CSE recommendations, personnel action items, a textbook and the financials. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Judy, second. Seema? Are there any questions or comments? Barbara?
Yes, I should have done this ahead of time, but in the minutes, it says that I asked to correct the early start time, you know, for the high school. Buying more buses. I think what I said, and again, they would prove it or not prove it, was that you know it might need more buses rather than saying we have to buy more buses. Except that if we could just correct that.
Sure. Linda, I also sent you one correction with regard to approval of the minutes. Okay, are there? Oh, great. Are there any other comments?
Abstain, right? Because you're absent.
I'm sorry, what's the?
You're absent, right?
Oh, yeah.
Just from the minutes?
Right.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero, Gloria's in.
On I abstain.
With Judy abstaining from the minutes. Damian, Gloria is on, right?
Gloria is on. Double check, but yes, she is.
Okay, the next item is the information items, curriculum and instruction. Damian?
Thanks very much. I have a couple of updates, actually an update and an announcement from our music department. Uh the first is some good news. Each year, thousands of student musicians in New York State compete for an opportunity to be selected for the prestigious NISMA Conference of All-State Music Ensembles. Admission to these highly selective groups is based upon the score received the previous spring during the NISMA Solo Evaluation Festival. Each student performed before before certified adjudicator who carefully evaluated every aspect of their performance and were pleased to report that Gilderland High School Music Department is proud to announce that six students were recognized for their exemplary performance, including Sadie Bierker, Sean Donnelly, Olivia Fanchaw, Tressa Paliffel and Helen Yang. These talented students will spend four days rehearsing in Rochester with gifted students from across the state with the event culminating in a concert at the Kilborn Hall at the Eastman School of Music. Excuse me. Sadie and Sean will be singing in the All-State Chorus under the direction of Dr. David N. Freiling of Hofstra University. Tressa Anoba will perform in the All-State Wind Ensemble under the direction of Ricky, Dr. Ricky Fleming Fleming of Buffalo State. And Olivia will be singing in the All-State Treble Choir under the direction of Dr. Deanna Joseph of Georgia State University. And of course, we want to extend a warm congratulations to all of our great musicians, their teachers, their parents and all involved with their outstanding accomplishment. And next also from the music department is an announcement and a bit of an invitation as well. The Gilderland Music Faculty and Friends will present a recital on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, that's tomorrow night, at Farnsworth Middle School at seven P.M. This evening features music from students and staff in all different genres and styles. The music faculty are joined by members of other departments and the administration who will join together to perform and I believe Dr. Wiles will be performing.
I have dusted off my clarinet and I've been practicing.
Rehearsal Hard asked me to play as well and I said, play what? So anyway, this delightful evening, it gives students and the community an opportunity to appreciate their teachers and the role of a performer. Highlighted on the program will be both vocal and instrumental ensemble performances. While there is no admission fee for this event, each year donations are collected and given to a charitable organization. And in response to all of the devastating hurricanes, the charity this year will be Americare's who provide emergency health care and services to those in need of monetary and food donations are greatly appreciated. So we invite you to come and enjoy this wonderful evening of music and entertainment and help support a worthy charity. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments for Damian? Okay, now we move on to board president information, which relates to the Board of Education member vacancy. As all of you know, we did receive unfortunately a resignation letter from Mr. McManus, who will be resigning effective October twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, which is tomorrow. Um I had the opportunity to speak to our legal counsel about how vacancies are filled on the board and there's one of two ways. One, it would be to hold a special election, which I'm told is pretty rare. Um the second way would be for board appointment and uh Mr. Honeywell, our legal counsel, told me that the board can fill that any way that they want. Um in the past, it looks like the board has solicited applications and conducted interviews. Um I do note that the last time I think there was a vacancy, it was the June-July timeframe, so that's a little bit different than now. Um also, if the board knows of anybody, they could just appoint them. Um whoever the board appoints, if that's the route that they choose to take, that person will serve until the May fifteenth election, at which time four seats will be available for election. So the community will definitely have input at that May election who completes Mr. McManus' term, which is scheduled to expire, I believe, um June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Okay, um so I will open it up for discussion and see how the rest of the board feels in regard to the process that we want to use to fill this vacancy. Kathy?
Well, some of us um were on the board the last time we filled a vacancy. I believe um the board member moved out of the district and so um we used an open process at that time. We um we we I think we um did a press release or something saying there was a vacancy to make sure that it was widely known in the community and then we asked for um uh letters of interest and then um we had a like a I guess a televised interview process, a question and answer. And then um then the board um I guess probably deliberated more in a um a closed session so as not to embarrass anybody or whatever and um made a decision. So that I think that was how we we did it before and and you were kind enough to send the um the minutes of that meeting, so that was a reminder that that's how we did. So that was an open process of um selecting uh someone to appoint.
Okay. Thank you. Judy?
My my concern is that um I hope that we'll be able to do it quickly. I I remember the process and we also had a year when we had um somebody died who was on the board and that was during the summer, but we went through that same process, I believe, for that one. And as long as we can do that quickly, I I think that's good. I mean, the community spoke strongly uh in the election in May um for Sean Maguire, but I think that um in fairness, perhaps we should open it up and and interview people.
Do you remember um kind of how long that took in the past? You said you it would be nice if we could do it relatively quickly, but.
I I don't think it was a a very long period. I'm I'm thinking um it was when John Dornbusch died and it was again, it was in the summer and um we had interviews and there were there were several people who who were interviewed and interested and they came and and answered questions. But I I think I would assume we could do it fairly quickly. I mean, if we don't, then we get into Thanksgiving and Christmas and we don't want to be an eight-member board.
Okay, yeah, just as a reminder, I think our next regularly scheduled meeting is November fourteenth, so I don't know if it's doable in that timeframe, but that would be nice. Seema?
Uh first, I just want to thank Chris for service and you're on here longer than me, so thank for volunteering all your time. Um the second thing, I agree with moving, you know, quicker than um going faster than slower with this because of the timeframe and I just thought it would be good to point out again to make it clear that whoever ends up taking the position, it would just be till May, right? And then there's four people that run in May and one of those positions, which was Chris's seat, is just for two years, right? So.
Yep, a little bit more than two years because they would begin on May fifteenth as soon as the results came in.
That's right. I know we haven't met as a board since, so I've heard of like a couple of people who've kind of been interested, but I did not know if anybody else had, you know, contacted the district or anything like that. It's it's just weird because we didn't have any meetings and this happened kind of in between, so we've not even been able to sit and talk yet about it. So I didn't know if there was any other information that we didn't have.
I just wanted to comment. I did I did email um like I would mention that we have had one, um I guess you'd say formal application from Sean Maguire. I did I did email him and ask him if it was okay to mention his name at the meeting and he said yes, so so I'm just saying that um that's the only actual application for the um appointment that I'm aware of at this time. I mean, maybe maybe there are informal um inquiries, but um that's the only um actual letter of interest that I'm aware of at this time.
Yep, I I was aware of that letter as well, but again, it's um there's no process that we have to follow. I know that's the way that we did it in the past, but uh Mr. Honeywell did make a point to me that we could do whatever we wanted, so.
I think if I I mean, Sean Maguire got a lot of of votes. Um it was a very strong show of support for him and the community. And in that sense, you know, I I would not be uncomfortable if we appointed him, asked him and he said that he would be interested and and had him um join the board, but by the same token, I think it would be good if we opened up. The community said they liked him a great deal when we had the election, so.
Um Chris?
So this is just my opinion. They gave me my own mic, so you would have to listen to me uh this time, but um to me, the the board has two main roles, which is policy and you have a fiduciary responsibility. And I think my opinion, some board members forgot last meeting about the policy part, but we don't have to talk about that now, which is fiduciary responsibility. I mean, I do have a budget background. When I'm off the board, I would just say it's just like a company with a job application and you have to see what your needs are and what the position is. And I my personal view is you have to get someone with a financial background because then no one on this board would have a financial background if you don't do that. I know Kathy's mentioned the Citizens Budget Committee or whatever that group was. If you want to go that route, I guess you could do that also, but I know the audit report last week, last meeting, no one asked questions, which I thought was um surprising, you know, because that's a very important document. I know we had questions during the audit committee and that's why I didn't ask questions, but I guess I could have repeated them. But I think that's I think that's very important. I think when we did that tax rate piece, at least some of the comments I heard from board members, I didn't think they fully understood what we were doing because I think it was a very complicated piece. And I know people do glaze over when we look at the budget, but we had a significant surplus um last time and we have to know why we had that surplus and if we're gonna have it again and what to do about it and try to prevent it in my opinion. And um so I think it's a job application and you have to find the person with that type of background. So I think you should send it out to people and specifically ask for that type of person and send it to different firms maybe around here who are people that live around here to get those type of people to apply. Glad you need it.
I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to comment before we start going back. Is there somebody who hasn't spoke that would like to weigh in on the process aspect of it? Barbara?
We're dealing with a sort of a short timeframe and so if we're gonna do that process, I would say a week and then that following week before our meeting, have the interviews. But another way you can look at it is that sort of everybody talks about the learning curve on being on the board. And would you not perhaps want to uh at least think about some of our former board members, be it Linda Basque or Rose Levy or people that uh still live in the district that for that short period of time might be willing to give five or six months, you know, for about seven meetings or so um to fill the slot temporarily? And it's it's just like seven meetings really that we wish you had to stay for.
Eight, eight.
Eight, eight, okay. But I mean, that's that's an that would be a third way of doing it. In other words, so you're not training this person, you're not you're not having to bring them up to speed, so I I just throw that out for, you know, possible consideration.
Tim?
I'll take a crack at this. Um so I have a I have an issue with the word process because if you look at um policy twenty-one fifty, which is the unexpired term fulfillment, it says the Board of Education has the power to fill any vacancy by a majority vote, period. That to me means we could almost decide it tonight if we really wanted to. I think the what what a lot of people have said about the time crunch makes this a little bit of unique circumstances compared to if you're figuring something out in May or June uh before the next school year even begins. You have that uh buffer time period of of a few months where someone can come in and get up to speed. I know there's a lot of work, a lot of uh training that you have to go through. I still have to do the fiscal training for the School Boards Association. That's six hours coming up in November. Um so there there's a lot when you're coming in. Um with that said, I think we're on a very tight uh timeline because the uh board direction for budget development is December fifth, six weeks away. And I know uh Mrs. Tollhilt mentioned at the last meeting that that was coming up. At that time, it was nine weeks away. I mean, six weeks is gonna evaporate fast, so it would be really good to have somebody in. Since we're throwing out names of former board members, I'd throw out Mr. Simpson. Um I think he would be perfect for this. Uh he wouldn't have to go through any new member training. Uh he's got plenty of board experience and especially that fiscal background. I mean, I know I uh said when we had the candidates forum that uh if I had questions, I would give him a call. I still would do that. I I always enjoyed listening to him at the meetings and he just he knows, he knows it. Um I I have to fake it and pretend like I know it. He knows it. He's a he's an encyclopedia. In fact, I was thinking how he could probably teach the six-hour fiscal NISP course that I'll be attending. So uh just because of that time crunch and I know the fairness aspect would be to go to the fourth vote getter. That would be fair, but I think because of our time constraints and really six weeks is the magic number, um I think it would be good to go to a Mr. Simpson to to fill this unless we maybe heard from other uh former board members uh who wouldn't need to really get up to speed with anything. He doesn't need to at all, especially for the budget, so thanks.
Thank you for that. Teresa?
I'll echo what um what was just said. I feel that it's important because of the timeframe that we're in. that we're in, I'm only a year into being a board member, and even a year in, I feel like I'm still learning every budgetary process as we go through it. So I think it's important to have somebody with a serious background. So I would echo Mr. Haran's recommendation, because I feel that, I know, having sat next to Alan, I felt very comfortable in kind of peeking over his shoulder to say, "Oh, he noted that. I didn't even see that." So I think it's kind of important to have somebody with that knowledge base, because it's a pretty big budget we're dealing with, and we're going into it in a few weeks. And I also think that because it's such a short time period, we're only going from now until, or whenever this happens, until May. It's not saying that he's taking on the rest of Mr. McNannus's term. We're saying just for the next election. I don't think it's unfair or fair. I just think it's important to make the right decision.
Kathy? I just wanted to say that I don't think that it's necessarily necessary to artificially truncate the process. I mean, this, literally, tonight is the first public disclosure of a vacancy that I'm aware of. I mean, I know that there was, it has been known to a lot of people, but I think, I think it's important to at least give some time to put out a notice to the public, and also to, to get, get letters of interest. I mean, maybe former board members will, will send in letters of interest, but I don't think that, that it's appropriate to simply just say, "Well, we have to appoint a former board member, because being on the board is hard." I mean, yes, we all have our own areas of expertise or whatever, but really, when it comes down to it, I mean, making a decision, it's a, it's a group effort, and we're not, I mean, you don't have to have a slot for a particular expertise. I think, I think that would be a mistake. I think that you need to put this out to the community. I mean, I don't think, I don't think you need to rush, just because we, we give input in December. I mean, if somebody isn't comfortable giving budget input in December, they can, they can pass. I mean, it's not like, like, that's a crucial thing that we do, you know? It's like input to, to Marie and Neil and the rest of the administrative team, so they can put their budget together, but the budget is not yet together. So I just think that the real process is in the spring, when the budget comes out, and we have to, you know, in March, is it? And then we have to think about that. But, but none of us have seen this budget, right? I mean, we've, we've been through budget processes, some of us, you know, a number of times, but each budget is different. So I don't, I don't really see why you need to have a particular slot for a particular person just because, oh my gosh, we have budget input in December. I mean, that's just, I mean, I think that, that's doing a disservice to the public, to just, to do it like that, to say, "Oh, we have to artificially rush. You know, we have this, this really truncated timeframe, so we can't send out notice, and we can't get letters of interest. We just have to, you know, go to former board members." I mean, I just think that would be, I mean, I think that's just, that's not, that's not an open process. It's not, I mean, I think the public might be saying, you know, kind of like, "What are you doing?" You know? So that's my two cents on it.
And what's your view?
I'm cognizant of the short period of time before the budget starts, and I do, I agree with Kathy, we don't need to artificially fill a slot, but I think it's imperative to have somebody on this board with a financial background. I think it's a disservice to the community to not have anybody with that background, and not, I look at these numbers, and I don't know the right questions to ask. Someone like Chris, or someone like Mr. Simpson, can look at it and process that information, and ask really thoughtful, meaningful questions. Without the answers to that, or without somebody keeping their eye on that, I think it's a big oversight. I wish that we would have more people run with that sort of a background, but I think we need somebody with a financial background.
Are we really all afraid of numbers?
I mean, listen.
Or do we understand them?
Right. I don't think we have the depth of knowledge, is what I'm saying.
Well, but, but we have that on the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, that's fine.
I was just going to say, that's, it's not why we have accountants on the audit committee? I mean, we have-
Outside accountants, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, but we have, no, we literally have people to be on the audit committee who have a financial background. And I thought that that was, going through that committee, like, like, the audit report, like, well, people with financial backgrounds looked at that, and then, I think probably we didn't have questions, because it was a clean report. I mean, it wasn't, there weren't any problems identified.
If we're being honest with ourselves, we just passed financials, A, B, and C. How many of you actually looked at A, B, and C? If you're being honest with yourselves, or you just pass it? The one person who asked questions would be Alan, because he actually looks and understands those numbers. Honestly, if you're really being truthful-
But, but I think that we don't, excuse me, necessarily have to turn, I mean, I don't think we should eliminate other people. Sean has sent us an email today, and has extensive background, is willing to do it. I think if we make the part of the process that we are looking for somebody who has a strong financial background, that would probably serve us as well, and might assure that we had somebody on the board who was comfortable with finances.
Seema?
I guess I would just, what Kathy said, and Tim said, I would be comfortable opening it up, you know, and letting people know, because this is the first time that it was even made public that Chris stepped down. But I, again, would also want to move fast. A wise person once told me it takes, what, 2.6 years to be a fully functioning board member? So I'm almost a fully functioning board member. And I would say that it does take time to really learn, even going through the agenda, like, what consent items are, what information items are, action items. It took me some time to figure that out. And so I just think, timing-wise, I would be in support of Alan returning. And trust me, I've disagreed with Alan on many things, but having worked with him for a few years now, I would feel comfortable in that. But I also think opening it up would be fair. So I'd like your idea, Barb, of like, posting it for one week, doing the interviews right before the next meeting. So I don't know how we're going to decide this, but that's what I would be in favor of.
The reason why I picked this date is so that someone could, I thought it would be unfair for someone not to start the budget process. I think that someone, whoever takes a seat, should start when the budget process starts. And that's why I didn't pick March or whatever it is, you know? I think that's the only right thing to do, that you see the thing through.
I'm sorry. Gloria?
Can I be heard?
Yes.
Of course. Okay, good. Because I'm using a different device here. I think we need to remember that the way boards of education are elected are that the public chooses them. There's no requirement for, that the board has X amount of people from a business background, or X amount of people from a lawyer background, you know, whatever, that their, the board of education is meant to just be citizens elected by the community to represent their interests. So I think, keeping that in mind, I don't feel that there's any strong need to interview people based on their qualifications, because they're either an attorney, or they're a financial advisor, whatever the reason. I think the most important thing is, and the public, when they vote, is people who wish to put themselves out there, people who want the job, and because those are usually the people who are going to be committed, who are going to spend the time, and are going to learn. So I really feel, I agree wholeheartedly with what Kathy said. I don't think we should rush this. I think we can take a few weeks, put it out there to the public, get the letters from people who might be interested, spend an evening talking to them, and that night, meet and make a choice. I don't think that's going to require more than three, three weeks, four weeks at most.
Does anybody want to respond to that? I'm uncomfortable with the three to four-week suggestion. I think that stretches it out a little bit too long, but that's just my opinion.
If we did three weeks, that would be just before the next board meeting, right? I think that's three weeks away, so that might be a good way to do it.
It would be nice if the board is in agreement, if we could get it on the agenda first thing for November 14th, if somebody is identified, that-
Vote them in.
Yep. Barbara?
If you decided to do the general stuff, November 3rd, if that was the cutoff, they have to be in by the 3rd, we could do interviews the week of the 6th through the 10th, and then you'd have someone that would be, you know, chosen by the 14th.
Like, one night of interviews?
Yeah, yeah, have everybody there at the same time.
Like, sort of like a meet-the-candidate televised?
Yeah.
I don't remember if we did, had one person come in.
No, we had, I remember a group of people sitting around, yeah.
We had a board.
Yeah. Were they all there at the same time?
Yes, yes, they were all there at the same time.
So why can't you do that for executive session before the meeting at 6:00, and then appoint the person at 7:00? You mean, more than that?
I think it gives you time to, you know, to really talk about it. I mean, I-
I think, so another thing Jeff Honeywell told me is, the vacancy cannot be filled until Chris is no longer here. So the earliest date would be tomorrow. Obviously, we're not thinking about that. But if we were to have a special evening, a sort of meet-the-candidate question-type forum, we could have that earlier, and then meet an executive session to discuss it after, and then either go into public session and vote on it, or do it first thing on the 14th.
Yes.
So what do we have to do, vote on this, or put it in the plan?
Well, this is an informational thing. I don't know if I have to vote on this right of action.
It seems to me it would be good if we're trying to get this done in a timeframe, to do it, to decide how we're going to do it, and set up a schedule. I just think, otherwise, then we have to wait until-
I recall how that notice went out, and where the applications came back to, and who kind of set up the questions for-
We have the file from when it unfolded. I think the applications went to Mrs. Livingston, and the questions are there, so go back and look at those.
So can we aim to do those interviews, what did you say, the first week in November?
Well, if, if the applications, today is the 24th, that gives almost two weeks, if we close it out on the 3rd. You may want to close it out on the 2nd, so that way-
It's next week, yeah.
Stuff could be gathered, you know, on the 3rd, and then have your-
So close it out next Friday, and then meet earlier?
Like, on Wednesday from this Friday, yeah. And then-
November 3rd?
November 3rd will be the cutoff. They have to be in by 5:00.
Okay. And then we will pick a date for the following week to do the interviews. Is that agreeable to everybody?
Just send out a doodle or something to find out, you know, the most availability.
And it will be televised as well?
Yeah, it should be an open meeting, of course, that part of it.
Okay. And then the rest of us will make time to meet after to discuss.
I don't recall, I mean, it wasn't, there were quite a few candidates that, as I recall, and I don't know whether it was when Julie, or after John Dornbusch had died, but there were quite, there were maybe four or five, which can be quite a few when you look at how many people run for the board. And we just asked some questions and talked.
We probably had the questions from last time.
Yes.
Two, two things. Will the person that gets appointed, will they take over Chris's role on audit, and is it communications, the two that you do? So that's just one idea. And then also, we have to then address the vice president spot.
Yep. So we would probably do that right after the person is appointed. That would be the second item on the agenda on the 14th. So if anybody's interested, you've got big shoes to fill.
And they get their own microphone.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else on this?
I'm just going to take one more crack at it, because I really think that we're going to spend too much time on this. I don't think, I don't think we should even spend two weeks on this. And I really don't think that we need to, we're being transparent right now tonight with our discussions on this. I think that's an expectation from the public, but I don't think we have, I really have a problem with all of this televised, this and that, when, when the policy says, "The Board of Education has the power to fill any vacancy by a majority vote." We, we know of two people that we can go to. I just don't, I think Chris has used the term "slow-walking," and that seems to be the trap that gets fallen into all the time with these things. So I'm not, I'm not satisfied with that kind of timetable. I think we, I really think we could vote tonight.
But if, if we, I mean, we don't have to do it that way, Tim, because after we interview the people, we talk to them, we make a decision, we can let that person know, and they would then be able to be in that next meeting anyway. I mean, whoever it is, isn't here tonight, so we could just have them come. It wouldn't make any difference in the timing, if that's what you're looking at.
I'm only aware of one application right now. I mean, I don't, I'm not aware that any of the other, these other people that you keep referring to have even applied for the appointment.
Yeah, but why would they apply if it hasn't been official until tonight?
Well-
Just tonight is when people know.
It's kind of, it's kind of been, I guess, generally known, you know, so.
No, this, this is not it.
Well, it's known to some people, so.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, like, publicly, we've, we've never even met as a board since knowing this. Like, we just knew via email. So, you know, I don't think everybody knows.
No, that's, that's kind of my point, yeah.
But to say there's only one application, I think is unfair. If that's the route we go, because we didn't put any time, we didn't even let people know. I mean, I'm in agreement, if they're these, the only two people, I'm in agreement with getting someone with a financial background, and I, and I am in support of Alan. And I also like Sean, too, and I think maybe the spring would be good for him to join.
I was just, I was just responding to Tim's comment that we should vote tonight, right?
Well, that's off the table. We can't vote tonight because Chris is-
All right, but I was just responding to that comment, and I was saying, we only have one application as of tonight. So that was, that was my only point. I wasn't saying that, that we shouldn't give public notice, that we shouldn't give more. Okay? I was just saying, what are we voting on tonight? We have one application. So if you want to appoint that person tonight, I guess we could, but-
I think he was saying, and I don't know, I can't speak through, but do the, does somebody even have to have an application in? You know what I mean?
Right.
That's informational.
So this, this is an informational item. It is disconcerting to me that I've- That was a teacher stare. It is, it's disconcerting to me that I have received emails and other comments and feedback to something that was not public information, to my knowledge, and a lot of kind of misinformation in some of those messages that I received. And I tried to respond to the majority of them vaguely. If a, if a vacancy does open up, the board has not discussed anything yet, we will meet tonight to discuss it for the first time. I think it seems like the majority of the board is leaning one way, but just for the record, I do agree with Tim Haran, that it's something that I would be prepared to vote on as soon as possible, but I understand I'm obviously one of nine, so whatever the will of the board is, it sounds like that route that we just talked about it, seems like it is. But if there is a majority interested in doing it another way, we should discuss that now.
Well, I would just say that if, if it's just Alan and Sean, then I don't think you need to spend a night talking to them. I think, I think all of us know them, and saw it during the election. But it's up to you guys. I won't be around, so you can do what you want. But it's just another night to-
So are there five people in favor of putting this notice out there, and doing it by, before the next meeting, so the person could-
Yeah, so we could appoint them for the, you know, the next meeting. They could be part of the board.
I said, do you want to ask Christine that if there's-
Sure. By a show of hands, and Damian, watch for Gloria, who would be in favor of soliciting applications and interviewing, and having that, that one-night meeting that we talked about?
Before the, before the next board meeting.
You mean, in having a period of time, yeah, where you give public notice, and accept applications, and then have an interview? Yes.
Before the meeting.
Yep, okay. So raise your hand if you are, yep.
Next meeting.
A decision would be made. We would have that solicitation of applications. We would have that night where the multiple people would come in, and, or all the respondents would come in. We'd ask them questions. It would be televised. We would meet to discuss it after. And then the first item on the November 14th meeting agenda would be the appointment of Chris's replacement. So by a show of hands, who's in favor of that? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so it looks like that's the way that will go. So does the district take care of getting that notice out?
Let me just clarify what the notice looks like. We, last time this occurred, we did a press release that went out the very next day. I would suggest that we work with Aubrey and do a press release tomorrow, so that that can go out, and perhaps do an SNN.
Enterprise, still.
Yes, we could potentially get in the enterprise, so I would suggest we do that work tomorrow. We would create a close-of-business on November 3rd deadline for a letter of interest. I'm just double-checking by looking around. And then we would send around a doodle poll to find an evening in the following week when we can get the board together to do interviews, and we would work with Andy, Mr. Maycock, to get it televised, and so on.
Okay. Okay. All right, so that is the route that we will take. Thank you, everyone. Now we move on to action items, school business management. Neil?
Thank you, Christine. First item this evening is a resolution for continued participation in the New York School and Municipal Energy Consortium for Electricity and Natural Gas. We've been doing this since 2003. This is the supply side of the equation, so this is a process where we're one of 156 school districts, our BOCs, and 23 municipalities throughout New York State that comprise the consortium. Anadaga, Cortland, Madison, BOCs is the lead on this one. They will seek competitive bids for the purchase of natural gas and electricity for a three-year period. It can be one to three years. National Grid will still be the delivery charge, so that charge is separate from what we would do on the supply side, which is actually going out to bid, seeking prices from multiple vendors for the purchase of natural gas and electricity.
And we've gotten very good rates from that.
Excellent rates, yes.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the resolutions? Barbara, second. Judy, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the applications for corrected tax rolls for the 2017-18 school year. And there's two corrections totaling just over forty-three thousand dollars, excuse me, forty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the resolution to correct the tax rolls? Seema, second. Kathy, questions or comments? Chris?
There's a question. So the town does this, right? So we let the town do it, right? So when there's mistakes, why does it fall on the school district and not the town?
Also I can tell you that's the way the law works. So we're the taxing entity, so it is a school tax issue. So if the town makes clerical error, that error under the law can be corrected. And then we, as the taxing agency, have to approve that. If we were to deny it, we'd have to claim the basis for the denial and it would go back to the county again, so...
And what will be the basis? Is it...
That's the part where, you know, we don't do assessments, so you really have to rely on the assessing agency in their role of correcting the taxes.
Do we have to pay the town when the, having the town clerk do the taxes for us, or...
The tax collector we pay for.
Right, so we pay the person who made the mistake that...
No, the assessor is the one that...
Oh, the assessor.
The assessor's issues with, of this sort are with the assessor. So the assessment is being, well, this one is actually a tax exemption, but it would still be through the assessor.
But then the clerk has to approve it, right?
Well, it goes to Albany County first. So Albany County, the town will put the application together, send it to the county. The county will make a recommendation whether it should be approved or not. They've done that, so now it comes back to the school district. That's the, that's the taxing entity to approve.
It just doesn't seem right to me that, I mean, this is the second time that something like this, two board meetings and we continue to lose money. But, okay, if it is, it seems a little backwards.
Tim?
I just wondered, the amounts, so on the first document, it's eighty-eight hundred, and then corrected, it goes to zero. And on the second document, it's over forty thousand and it goes to zero.
Two separate parcels?
Yes.
Two different assessments.
But that's, that's a pretty big difference that you're billed for high amount and then it ends up being zero. Is that because of that tax exempt status?
This was, yes, exactly, tax exempt status, so they were taxed as if they had no exemption, so now they're determined to be fully exempt.
Shouldn't have been taxed at all.
The assessor put them on the tax roll thinking that they pay taxes. And then they say, no, we have an exemption certificate, so now you have to give them back their taxes. Sorry. So that's why last week, last board meeting, I forget how much that was, but that was another issue where the school then has to eat it. Which I don't understand how that's, you pay for a service, I don't know. Or, you know, you ask, someone else is doing this service for you, okay?
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution for declaring surplus and obsolete property. You've provided a list of items that we deem to be unneeded at this point and are willing to sell to the highest bidder.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the declaration of surplus and obsolete property? Seema, second. Judy, are there any questions or comments?
These are all things really bad. I mean, really, we've gotten their useful life out of them.
Anyone else?
I mean, they'd be a real bargain for somebody, but I don't mean to discourage... Yeah, okay.
Would people buy them or do we have, do we have to pay for getting rid of some of these things?
Well, everything's subject to bid, so some things, not everything may get bid on. So depending on, we do have the option to donate it after this. So if something doesn't receive a bid for another not-for-profit, if they were to be interested in something, we can donate it or we would dispose of it depending on the condition of interest.
Kathy?
I just, just a bit of information that one of our old school buses is now the senior transportation vehicle for the Town and Giddle and they fixed it up and they use it for that.
Yeah, problems like rust don't matter so much.
Oh, I don't know.
We can't, no, but we can't run them with a certain amount of rust and other entities might be able to.
I don't think it's rusty, but...
It doesn't take much for the state to think they're rusty.
Yeah, I know, I know, they're picky, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
Next is agreements for the federal IDEA, IDEA flow-through funds. We have three schools, Albany County Preschool, Parsons Early Learning Center, and Woods Services.
May I have a motion to approve all three service agreements together? Barbara, second. Seema, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
And finally this evening, we have a donation and that's from FMS House Principal Michael PIPA. It's the donation of a freezer, so we're very appreciative of that donation.
May I have a motion to accept the donation? Judy, second. Teresa, any questions or comments other than thank you very much to the PIPA family?
I just want to know about the tax...
Chris?
But that, if someone doesn't pay taxes, now you taught us that we still get that money? Who pays for that then?
Somebody doesn't pay taxes.
Right. Remember when you gave us that list of people that...
Oh, yeah, so if somebody doesn't pay their tax bill, it goes to the county for collection. So the county's going to make us whole in April, so whatever...
Right, they make us whole, right.
They make us whole.
It's interesting, not to keep on going back to this, but on that situation, they make us whole. But when they make a mistake and assess it wrong, they don't make us a whole. So the one is not their fault, but the other one is their fault, but they only have to do it on the one that's not our fault.
That is the law, that's correct.
Just want to make sure everyone understands.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the donation? Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero. Now we move on to superintendent action items. Marie?
Thank you. I have two international field trips that are before the board this evening. The first is a high school trip for grades ten through twelve to Quebec City, Canada, led by Mrs. Rant, and that's for January twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. That's a Friday through a Sunday. And then also Farnsworth Middle School, grade eight world language and culture. Teachers are taking our French-speaking students to Montreal, March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, 2018. And those are the two days immediately preceding our April break.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve both of the foreign travel trips? Seema, second. Barbara, are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, a couple. Do the students pay for these themselves?
They do.
Okay, so there's no cost. And the other one is, when we're looking more carefully at trip sets, for like longer trips that may not be as closely connected to the curriculum or...
So the board hasn't approved any international trips in a while because we sort of separated the ones that go through the tour companies
Right, oh, okay.
that are not connected to any course or curriculum. Yes, they happen to have course and curriculum content, but they're open to any student in the high school who wants to go. These trips are for students who are studying French as an opportunity to practice their use of French and to be immersed in the culture. So that's why it's before you plus it's international, so it's a little bit different.
Right, but it's not a cost to the district either?
That's correct.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
And my last item this evening is a request to approve a co-curricular club at the middle school. This club is digital photography and it's to be led by Mrs. Melissa Livingston.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the club? Kathy, second. Teresa, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Okay, now we move on to board president action items. We have a couple of policies on the agenda. They were given to us last time for our first read. Barbara, do you want to say anything else about them or...
I haven't heard from anybody for any proposed changes, so...
You're about to.
May I have a motion to approve the policies? Kathy, second. Judy, any questions or concerns? Chris?
So I know we talked about this, I thought last time, but I'm just trying to get to the policy. But the one about the elections, just trying to find it, that's still on here, right? The election one? I mean, when I, when I read it, and I was... So not to pick on Tim, but... Well, make, is there another teacher in the audience? We can make another teacher.
That's okay.
All right, that's fine, it's my last name, don't worry about it. But I personally think that number six clearly states, and I don't think this is the intent. I think number six says that if you're a teacher, you can't run. And I don't know, I'm reading it, I'm an English teacher, but how I read it is the qualifications, you may not be a current employee of the school district.
But this says board member qualifications and you're not a board member until July first.
Right, but you're not qualified to run then.
Well, this isn't for candidates, it's for board members, so this doesn't say before you can run, right? This is...
That's why we changed the title, remember, and used to try to...
That's what I was going to say, because, yeah, we talked about that and it actually did say candidate.
Candidate at first.
And we thought that that caused confusion because it wasn't about a candidate, it was about a board member.
So someone that, so for the other pieces then, someone can run that, let's say, for example, holds another public office. As long as when they're on the board, they don't help hold the public office. They can run if they can't read or write, but just as long as they not do that when they're on the board.
Yes, if they can read and write when they get on the board and they don't have an incompatible public office.
Right, you don't have to be eighteen years old to run, you have to be eighteen years old to... I'm just making sure.
To serve, yeah.
All seven of these.
I don't know that they're mutually exclusive. I mean, some of these might be for both, but, but this specifically relates to board members.
A candidate.
So theoretically, if they turn eighteen after the election but before they take their board seat, that would be acceptable.
Are we sure? That's right? I don't know.
That's what it says.
The only one that they mention is the felon part, but...
Any other questions or comments? Tim?
Was there any consideration, again, given to that number six being so similar to the last sentence and being able to just combine it as may not be a current employee of the school district, except as permitted by law, and then striking that last sentence because it just seems redundant, so...
Barb, did you guys talk about that?
That was something that we were going to research and, because we thought that there was something perhaps hidden away in some law book, why that last sentence was put in by NISBA, but I haven't heard.
Well, the except as permitted by law, there are, it might be small city schools or some category of school where... And I'm not sure that that's the one, but I think, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you just want to move the phrase except as permitted by law into number six.
Yes.
And I think we're, we're in good shape if we do that.
Didn't we talk about that even as like no employee of the school district may be a member of the board? But we talked about how, not to pick on Mrs. Livingston, but that she could run for the board. She could be a board member even though she works for the district. I thought we had a discussion about that, that that would be one of those except by law, except as permitted by law.
But not in a central school district.
I'm sorry?
Not in a central school district, which is what we are. I think it was other categories of school districts. That might be small cities where the board, thank you, where the board clerk can also be a board member. But small cities, large cities, they have different rules governing how the board works. But we need to operate under the central school, union-free school category withfall. So technically, I mean, we don't really need except as permitted by law because we are a central school district. It doesn't hurt to have it there, though. But we could move that phrase up to number six and then strike the last part of the sentence and I think we'd be fine.
So do we need an amended motion to approve?
We have to amend thirty, no, twenty-one, twenty-one.
Okay, so what do we do? Take that first motion off the table? Or amend it?
No, that still stays. You just need a...
So we had a motion to approve the policies. Now we would want a motion to approve the policies with the amendment to policy number twenty-one, twenty.
Twenty-one, but first you have to vote on the change on the amendment. And then if that's accepted, then you approve all the policies.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
You'll make the amendment, I'll second it.
A motion to approve the amendment to board policy.
He has to propose it first.
Okay, Tim, you'll accept it.
All right, so I would, do I make the motion then right now?
Yeah, you make a motion to amend.
I make a motion to combine the language in policy twenty-one, twenty-one to read for item number six, may not be a current employee of the school district, except as permitted by law, and strike the bottom sentence from the policy.
I'll second that.
And then the fireworks one, is that off the...
I think we should vote on this one first. Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so that amendment passes nine zero. Chris?
Did the fireworks go away?
No, that's still in there.
Where is that?
That's under the building news.
So I'm going to vote against that one. I think we should have a policy similar to the other name in the field where you can come in, make your case, and then the board can decide. And we can always say no, but I don't think you need a blanket one. Because I think in the, in the future, you're going to change that, but...
Okay, so the current motion on the floor is to approve all of the policies, but now we're kind of...
Can we make your amendment that you want to strike? O.
I want to make a amendment to strike O.
To strike which one?
O.
Can you tell me what page number this is on? I can't find it. Oh, number four?
On fifteen R.
Um, okay, see.
Because we added about smoking. They were very sneaky. They put in smoking for e-cigarettes.
In this packet of, there's twenty-four pages of policies? Okay.
So under this, the use of fireworks is prohibited on school grounds.
And you want them to be able to...
I personally think, just like we have the naming of the fields, we should come up with a similar document in which someone can come to the board, you can fill out the document and say, for this event, I'm doing a charity event or whatever event they're doing, and I want to be able to use fireworks. And then the board can vote one way or the not to accept it. And you could always vote no.
I know, I know that.
But if it's a very, if it's a certain charity, we might then say, okay, if they're raising a lot of money on it. They do it right across the street from the baseball fields. It's not, that's shocking. It's right across the street.
You're making a motion?
Did you make a motion?
I'm sorry, I made a motion to strike O.
Okay, and did somebody second it?
I'm sorry.
I'll second it. Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to be a pain in the butt about that, but because it came about last year, about the lacrosse homecoming, does that mean that this was already in?
No, this was after.
This was added?
Because they never did it. They, they...
Okay. So once it's a policy, it's a policy and you can't have anybody comment and say, can we have an exception?
No, you'd have to, you'd have to...
Rewrite the policy?
You'd have to change the policy, which is my whole point, which is you want to fill out a document, which we have other pieces.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so now Chris made a motion and I seconded it.
Strike O.
Strike O. So, um, all those in favor? Barbara? Sure?
The reason why we, we put this in after the fiasco, you might say, with the lacrosse folks, what we found out is all the things that you have to do for safety, for licensure, and all that, and Neil, as our go-to guy, says, we don't really want to deal with that in the future, so would you put this in? And so, you know, that's why, this has never been in before, but that's why it was put in.
Babe Ruth does it across the street every year, and it brings a lot of people there, and I've never heard them complain or think it's that big of a deal. It's the same neighbors, probably.
I could just make a comment, it wasn't because of the paperwork issue, it's really about having explosives on school property, and is, is that a good fit for an educational institution to allow somebody to bring explosives on school property in this day and age?
Well, they're not wa, okay, alright, we don't have to, they're not walking around the school.
So, without any other questions or comments, all those in favor of the proposed amendment, please raise your hand.
Would, in favor means?
In favor of.
Of striking it?
Yes, please raise your hand. Okay, that's, one, two, three, three. Did you raise your hand?
I, I, I can buy her.
You can buy it?
I can buy.
There's only four.
Does Gloria have her hand raised or no?
No.
Okay. Um, all those opposed, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Does Gloria have her hand raised?
Yes, she does.
Okay, so, the motion fails.
So for this policy, I just want to vote no.
Okay.
Rest in peace.
Are there any other questions or comments on that list of policies? On this?
The all of the policies or just that one?
All of the policies. Um, so, prior to all this, we had a motion on the floor to approve the policies, is that still valid? Okay, so, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
I just want, I just want to oppose the one.
So passes with one opposing fifteen hundred R.
Linda's got it, don't worry.
Linda, do you have all that? Okay, um, now we will move on to board committee reports, business practices. Kathy?
We're having, I think, I already gave a report on our last meeting, and we're having another one on November fifteenth?
Number fifteen, November fifteenth.
Yeah, November fifteenth, eight fifteen.
Um, audit?
Me myself, because I don't remember.
November thirtieth, Teresa.
Thank you.
Number thirtieth?
Yes, November thirtieth.
Okay, communications, Gloria?
Yes, we, we met last week, and we had two items on the agenda. Uh, the first item involved us looking at our newest draft for the issue tracker, which we, as a board, decided we'd like to do, so that we don't lose track of certain topics or things that go on during the year, and then think about them way too late. So.
I'm sorry, can I stop you for a second, Gloria? It's a little bit of feedback here. Can everybody hear Gloria? Okay.
If it could be a little louder, it would be good, I can hear.
Okay, Gloria, continue, sorry about that.
I think Marie was going to demonstrate, uh, she, what she did at the committee meeting was Marie demonstrated what Linda Van Oken had put together, in terms of an issue tracker, a way for us to keep track of issues that five or more of the board members would like to kind of keep an eye on as the year goes on. Uh, the form, uh, and I don't think you'll have it there, but we looked at it, the form would include various information about the item that we'd like to keep track of or the topic, uh, the status of the work being done on the issue, um, and that if the majority of the board wants that item to stay on the tracker, it will go on the tracker, and be brought up either at a committee meeting, or if it's resolved at some stage, that would be indicated in this tracker. Was said at the board meeting, that would be included on the tracker. What we thought was that, um, we would allow the input of the data onto the tracker to be done at the district office by Linda, and that, uh, uh, each Friday, when, or each Friday when Dr. Wild sends out her weekly, uh, update, she would improve the tracker to maybe what's on it, and what all, we could look on it and see what the status is of any topic we wanted to follow. Perhaps we could put one on as an example, like the kindergarten age, you know, um, and so people could check each Friday when they get through, uh, the package for the week, they could also check any issues that we as a board placed on the tracker, where they are, if they're in committee, if it's been resolved, whatever the case will be. So that was our session of that. Does anybody have questions on the tracker idea, or before I move to number two?
I can answer too, if you can hear, because I was there, about this tracker thing.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll keep working on it, and, and, you know, you'll start to see it, and we'll, as you see it, and we can do better, we will keep tweaking it, but we think it's a great idea, I mean, we were all very positive about it, we really are grateful to, uh, to Linda Van Oken for the work she's done on it. So the second item we talked about was to talk about a potential board retreat for ourselves. Uh, one of the items, uh, well, what we put on the agenda was a chance to talk to Robert Hendrick, who's the consultant, uh, he works with boards of education and school districts all across the state on many topics.
Gloria, you're, you're breaking up a little bit? Gloria, do you mind if Marie gives this part of the presentation? Because you're breaking up a little bit, and it's difficult to hear you.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, so at the communications committee meeting, um, we had, um, Robert Hendricks, join us through a Google Hangout. Um, he is the gentleman who was part of the RFP process when we were talking about strategic planning, so he had already been through a, a vetting process with us, so he spent about forty-five minutes, um, talking with the committee, and the district office team was there as well, about a variety of topics that had to do with our own group process, um, communication, how we set norms, we're working together, and all of those kinds of things, so, um, he, let me, I'm just going to read from the notes that I put together a little bit here, so, um, so he talked about the work of relationship building, and how the primary work of a school board is to, um, really be all on the same page and thinking forward about mutually held, shared goals for where the school district is going. Um, he talked about, a lot of that has to do with relationships, and that sometimes boards struggle, because the only time boards are together is around this table, you know, making votes on difficult issues, and there's some value in having time to talk more about that working relationship. Um, so as, as he said, he spoke about the need for boards to have a vision of the future that they coalesce around, that transcends the issues of the day. Um, so, in our conversation, we, we, uh, got advice for him, that perhaps we would benefit from spending some time, engage in a conversation about how we communicate, uh, group dynamic, group process, and that it would be, um, you know, kind of an investment of time to set some norms for how the board works together. Uh, and that would include the relationship with the district office team as well. So he talked a lot about how such work can transcend the coming and going of individuals, um, if we can set some norms for how all meetings roll, roll, not just the board and, and, um, the district, but across the district, how people, um, you know, how we work together. So, um, part of that was, so is there a chance for us to get together and do some of this work? And he suggested that it's more than a PowerPoint presentation or an hour conversation some evening, but that if we're going to do some, uh, work in this area, that it's a time commitment. So where we left the conversation on the eighteenth was, um, being very mindful of the fact that we already ask a lot of board members, as it is, and now we've put another date on your calendar as well, potentially for, um, you know, the interviewing of board, a new board member, but that there is some value in, um, having some conversations. The initial suggestion was that we look at perhaps one of our two regularly scheduled board meetings in December, this is unusual frankly, that we have two board meetings in December, and as a starting point, we use that evening, rather than have a regular board meeting, we use it as a retreat night. And then from there, we would think, is this worthwhile? Where do we go from here? So that was, uh, the idea that we wanted to bring forward to the board. Gloria or any committee member want to jump in if I didn't quite get it?
No, I, I think it, I think you, I think clearly that what we committed to as a group, at least the communications committee, is that we take the first step, that we, we try to make a commitment, that we do this first work about relationships and building of, you know, kind of getting to trust, to trust issues and all that, and then at the end of that, decide, well, where can we take it from here, and when do we want to move, and what direction? Uh, but the first and key thing we felt was that we have to begin, uh, building those avenues of relationships.
And, and he advocated for at least three sessions for about three hours, right?
That was his suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, like, he thinks in order to make a difference, then that's a type.
Well, I, I think he also is, is talking about a whole process. We may be at a very different stage than groups he's worked, but we, we have to decide what works for us. Right now, I think the key is that at least we get to know each other, and what each of us, uh, has as visioning for the district, so that we can come together around something. We may not need more than that, or we may need minimal, not, who knows? But I think we need to make a start, I, I think I felt that, the committee felt that way, everybody before they left, and the committee thought that that was a first, a good first step.
Seema?
I'm, I'm in agreement, you know, working, doing this together, if it's going to make us work, uh, more positively, more efficiently, so everything that goes down, you know, after, uh, from the board would, would work more smoothly, I would be in favor of that, but I still, we still don't know the cost, and it'd be good to know the time. I know that, that meeting that we were talking about in December is the one like right before the holiday, but it's after the public, or the.
Board input?
Um, for the budget, so I would be in favor of not adding another night, but instead replacing that meeting with something productive like this, but, you know, that's just my opinion.
Barbara?
I guess Gloria or Chris or anybody, um, we already, in a prior retreat, developed what we called norms for interaction behavior, particularly at a board meeting, being respectful, and we answer those questions every single time, and then over the course of last year, uh, we've been asked to write a sort of a, a board guide, that to me encompasses a lot of what you just said, that he's going to come and try and teach us. Um, in other words, about process and.
Well, now.
How you communicate, and all those kinds of things, you know, do you do email, do you not do email, do you go visit a school, do you not go visit a school, you know? It seems like we've done a lot of this type of stuff.
I, I think, I think Barbara, he's, he's not dealing with those particular things, I mean, what we're asking him to deal with is we struggle with, and we've seen it in the term, and, and how, you know, we communicated to each other, how we hear each other, how we, uh, respond to each other, and I think he's not there to tell us what to do, he's there to allow us to provide a safe space, for all of us to talk together, so that we get to know each other better, so that we can be, relate to each other and talk, have a conversation in a better way, so we can move forward, rather than moving forward having assumptions in our head that we haven't checked out, and that we're challenging each other constantly without really knowing. But I don't think he's going to tell us what to do, but I think having him there would provide us with a kind of an atmosphere or a safe place to begin, really get through and talk about some of the things that are, you know, making communication difficult.
Other thoughts on this topic?
I would just say that, um, what I said at the communications meeting, I won't be here, so then, you know, I won't vote, I won't, it's up to your decision, but I know the three retreats we had, in my understanding, the two of them, we've tried to deal with this type of issue, and how we interact with the district office, and I'm not sure if they really resulted in anything, so I hope maybe this won't be different, but I think that some members, we just have deep philosophical differences, so I don't know how he's going to, um, be able to bridge that. Maybe he can, but, um, I think it'd be great if, if he can, I think it's going to be difficult, but, and I think it'll be a lot of time, so I hope if you do it, then you're committed to it, but that the results are different than the first two, so maybe third time's a charm, and I, and maybe, I'm sure it happened even before I got on the board, so.
Else? Have any thoughts on this? Barbara?
Just want to ask Kathy, uh, you've gone through some of these retreats as well as I have, and, uh, does this sound like deja vu?
I don't know, I mean, I guess hope springs eternal, you know? I mean, I, I mean, some of them have been better than others, I think the most dreadful ones have involved PowerPoints and, um, you know, kind of lectures, uh, you know, and some of the, some of the better ones have involved more, I guess, interactive, um, things, but, but I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know what's, what's resulted from some of these, but, um, you know, I mean, I guess we could try substituting a board meeting and, and see how it goes, I mean, if we were going to have the night anyway, um, you know?
I also, you know, Kathy, I, I, I just want to pick up on something you said, um, you know, you, we don't just do board development once and then it's done, the thing is, we have to do this every year, you know, we're people that come together with very different ideas, we come from different backgrounds, and I think it's important that we, we see development as something that we do for ourselves each year. You don't just have a retreat once and then, oh, you're cured or you're fixed, we're not, we're, we're human beings, we have issues, very difficult issues that we're dealing with, we have very strong views, which is great, we come from different perspectives and different backgrounds, and so what's key is that we continually work on that relationship of, you know, we were very clear with Robert that we did not want a PowerPoint, and we do not want somebody like you, we want the opportunity to come together and bond and understand each other so that we can communicate better, that was our direction to him, and next year, you know, if we don't figure it out this year or next year, we can, it doesn't mean we stop doing it, we have to do this every year for ourselves, in some respect, we have to continue to develop that.
Teresa?
What happens with our board meeting that we're not having?
That's a, a question that I was wondering too.
When you had two meetings, it's not like you were having just one, and now, well, we're having a supplemental meeting, we actually have two meetings scheduled.
So we did have a program report scheduled for that night, we would have to move that to January.
A January meeting.
To a January, an existing January meeting. Um, I don't know what will be on that second agenda at this time, so I'm not quite sure what we're putting off per se, um, but, you know, we can be mindful of that, if indeed there is some timely item that would happen in December. We typically only have one meeting in December, so I'm, I'm not horribly concerned that there's, we'll miss some timeline for some crucial event.
I, I just had an issue with the amount of time. I, three days, is it three hour sessions, or was it three one hour sessions?
So, so far, all we're talking about is one session that would be the length of a typical board meeting. Now, the consultant is suggesting more.
The consultant's going to get paid more.
I think the point, I think, I don't think it was a matter of that, I mean, we haven't talked about the, I don't want to, I don't want to pursue any further with him again until I know we're going to do this, because it was.
Shouldn't we know the, the cost to begin with, before we agree? That lends a logical way to do it. I mean.
I, I think.
Don't you usually like to know the cost of something?
Yes, absolutely, so I think when we left the committee meeting, um, the idea was, is there even interest in this? If the board was going to say, no, we're not doing this, then we'll just end it right there, if there is interest, then tomorrow I can call him and get the price, and we can go. If there is interest, then tomorrow I can call him and get the price and we can go from there. But there's still time between now and December to actually schedule and move forward.
But I, but I just think it's, I think it's wrong if you're not just fully committed. I mean, if he says, I need three meetings and we should do three hours, and, you know, they should be a couple of months apart, I think you either commit to it or you don't commit to it. But does this have one meeting and they say, ah, see, it didn't work? Ah, he didn't do a good job, it was just like the other two. Well, you didn't, you didn't do what he said, which is, you need at least three meetings. It's like playing baseball and going to practice once. I, I, listen, you guys could do what you want and spend the money you want, but I'm just saying, it's like going to prac, baseball practice once instead of the nine times and saying, oh, that coach stunk, he, he didn't help me at all in playing baseball. I mean, he told you on the phone what you needed, and you're like, all right, we'll hire him for one, we're not going to give him another two. I mean, you have to be committed to his plan, if you believe in his vision and what you need. And he had different topics for each meeting? I don't know.
I think the key, the key question that he, he imparted to me was that there has to be an interest in what we want to do. How we go about doing it and what we decide are our next steps is still in, in our hands. When I spoke to him at the convention, I described, you know, where we were and we were working on some things, some relationships, and he thought, well, he said, I can't, I told him, we had set, set an hour and no PowerPoint, and he said, well, I can't do it in an hour, I can do it in a minimum of three hours to get that conversation going. So I said, well, that's what we're looking for. Whether we, whether that conversation ends there or continues on is up to us. But I think the conversation is key if we're going to move forward as a group. That's what I think, I, I felt myself, the committee felt.
I think the aspect of it that gives me a little bit of pause is the unknown, that we start with the, the one session and then it could lead to multiple more. And it's just that being here is a big time commitment. To add an unknown amount of additional retreats to this, that could be three hours is more than I have to give at this time.
But we're, we're only committing to one retreat and we may decide, oh, we want to follow up maybe next year, we might want to do one in next fall. This may be a process that we carry on over the course of a couple of years. I don't know. I don't know. We've got to see where we're at as a group, but I don't want anybody to commit to more than this, December nineteenth. I, I wouldn't want to commit to more than that either, not knowing.
Are there other thoughts on this topic? Are there thoughts on the topic of substituting a board meeting for a board retreat? Barbara?
If we're going to do it, I definitely would want to do it that way, because as you said, you know, potentially three three hour sessions in addition to the board meetings, I think is a big ask. And if you start it with, with that, you move the program report to January, I can see that happening easily enough.
Right, move the program report and any business that would have been conducted on the December nineteenth, so essentially consolidating two meetings and making...
But remember, this is the first time I can remember in a long time that we've had two meetings scheduled for December. So I suspect it would have been a very short meeting to begin with.
And we'll have a new board then too, so.
Yeah, we'll have a new board member. Okay, so I guess we, I go around the table and kind of get a feel for people, are you in favor of a retreat and are you in favor of the first, or that retreat being held on December nineteenth? Seema?
Yes.
Yes, of both?
If, yeah, if it's that nineteenth, if we could do it then.
Tim?
I'm in favor of something, but I don't like giving up a board meeting, so no.
Barbara?
I want to give up a board meeting.
So is that a yes, or that was an if we're going to do a retreat? Are you okay with doing a retreat?
I've just been around a long time, and these retreats really, to me, haven't produced a lot, but I'm always optimistic and willing to give it another shot, so, you know, if we want to do it after we find out how much it is, you know, I do it that, if we're going to do it, do it on that day.
Chris, I'll forego you since December nineteenth, we'll not be there.
Yeah, I'll say...
Um...
I'll text you guys what I'm doing while I sit there.
Okay. I'm really not in favor of either.
I'm in favor of having Mr. Hendricks come, and I think the nineteenth is fine.
Kathy?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of having a retreat instead of the board meeting.
And having the retreat to begin with.
Of what?
And having the retreat to begin with, you're in favor of?
Um, yeah, I, I think we could, yeah, we do.
Okay. Teresa?
I struggle with it, I, I...
Well, it looks like there's five that are...
I mean, I do, I, I struggle with it. I, I don't know what it will accomplish, because it feels good to think about it. I think, you know, we can sit by a campfire and sing kumbaya and say how wonderful it is, but I, I think it was Chris who had said that, you know, we all have our insight and I'm going to say no.
Okay. So that's so far two no's and one abstention. Gloria?
Yes, I would be in favor of it.
Okay.
But this is not a regular vote. Everyone has, all nine, excuse me, all eight of you have to be there, so if people, some people, I think, right? Gloria?
I would imagine that all eight have the date at least held for a board meeting anyway, so.
I'm just making sure.
I won't not go. I mean, I would definitely go if that's what everybody wants to do, and I'm not going to be that board member, it doesn't show.
Team player?
Yeah, I'm a team player at that, but I, uh, time is limited, and I'm sure everybody feels that way. It's a time crunch, especially I'm thinking December with everything that's going on and...
Except you would have been at a board meeting anyway.
Right, right. Like I said, I would, it's not like I wouldn't attend.
No, I know, but I mean, it's, that night is...
She's already committed. If we don't do this, you've still got the commitment of...
It's also not committed for, it's probably not a three hour commitment of two meetings on December, and then I have a feeling that it won't be one meeting of three hours, it's going to be followed by two additional ones.
Next year.
Because it's, it's, you need that. You need the, you need that additional two sessions of three hours of...
At least.
At least, to get to the, you know, the crux of how much I love you, Christine.
Well, I think, I was just thinking, you know, I mean, something that might be useful is, like, I know we're, we're philosophically different, we have different ideas, it might be useful to find out what we have in common, you know, if, because sometimes, sometimes, you know, we, we, I think, I think what, what I heard about this potential retreat is that, that it should transcend the issues of the day and, and coalesce around a common goal. And I think that that's sort of what we, we have been thinking about, and it's hard, it's a struggle to achieve that sometimes, so maybe that's a, maybe that's a, a goal for this retreat, you know, just to kind of try to, uh, try to coalesce around, you know, ideas we can all support, something like that.
I need six meetings.
What I'm trying to say. I mean, it's, it's not exactly seeking kumbaya, but...
So are there any other questions or comments on that? Gloria, is there anything else in the communications committee? Report? No?
Gloria?
I'm, we, we're meeting, our next meeting...
I'm sorry, when was the next meeting?
November first at 5:45.
November first.
Okay. Thank you, Gloria. Policy committee, Barbara?
Uh, we're meeting tomorrow. Four o'clock.
Thank you.
Um, now we have public comment number two. Linda, did anybody sign up? Okay, um, now we have board issues, ideas and sharing, and before we get into that, I just again would like to thank Mr., Mr., Mr. McManus for your service. It really has been a pleasure serving with you, and hopefully we'll stay in touch beyond to this. You definitely will be missed.
Thank you.
It's not too late to reconsider.
No, it is. Linda told me it is. I begged her and she said no, so. And you're a great president, you run a great meeting, and even if you decide not to run again, you should be forced to come here every meeting and run it. You should do a great job.
Take it under consideration. Does anybody have any other board issues, ideas and sharing, Judy?
Well, a, a couple of things. First thing I'd like to talk about, I've meant to talk, talk about for quite a while, and that's what a pleasure it is, I, I go to Linwood as a volunteer, but looking as I walk down to the rooms where I'm going, at, at the artwork in the halls is all, just, it always brings a smile to my face. And also in the district office, the quality of the work that's displayed, and I think we should remember to give credit to our art teachers and the students for what they're producing, because it really, it does make our schools and, and the district office impressive, I think. And so I just want to say thank you. And also, we had a, a great convention, and I always hope that more people would be able to go, because I just, just being around other Board of Education people and leaders and Mary Ellen Ilya, our, our commissioner spoke, and to me, it was very interesting because two years, I think it was two years ago, when John King was still commissioner, it was a very contentious time, and the commissioner usually comes and talks for forty-five minutes or an hour, and then questions are asked. Well, at the last one with John King, people were so angry that they had a panel discussion and you couldn't ask questions and talk. The one before that, there were lines out the door of people wanting to ask him things. Mary Ellen Ilya is so comfortable and is such a good leader and speaker, five people had questions, and none of them were particularly earth shattering, just, it was very good and, but the whole convention was great, and I say thank you, because I enjoyed going and learning and being part of it.
Thank you for going.
Yeah, next year it'll be in New York City again, if people are interested.
Seema?
Um, yeah, mine's a comment and a quick question. Gloria, I told her, I told her I'd mentioned that we both went to the Long House at Linwood.
Oh, yeah.
And we got to see the...
I was going to ask you about that, Judy. Yeah, I, I went, I went before, yeah.
I had not seen the, I guess, the closing ceremony to it, which was, it was pretty cool, and there were a lot of parents there, and so that was a pretty awesome experience, so I guess congrats to those teachers for putting on a, a great exhibit. The second thing, thanks Judy for subbing for me next week.
Yes.
Again, for liaison, and I know the special ed PTA meeting is this Thursday. Is someone assigned to that? Because if no one can go, then I could go.
We do have somebody assigned.
You're going.
But you're more than welcome to go.
Yeah, I might go anyways, I just didn't know if anyone was assigned.
Going to give you a report?
Yeah.
Thank you for reminding everyone. Barbara?
Just a, a quick summary of the convention. She went to workshops and I went to various ones. A lot of those that I went to had to do with mental health and the need for mental health awareness. This sort of presentation that we just had with the kids was phenomenal, but many of the presenters were talking about, e- even the little kids, you know, when anxiety hits around age of eight and depression and things such as that, as the kids get a little bit older. And to compare the presentations of this conference versus like ten years ago, when this wasn't even on anybody's radar. And as I said, one of the, the main sessions had to do with mental health, and then there were many workshops as well, you know, that had to do with it. The heroin epidemic, I went to a number of sessions on special ed, and one called, well, that never happens at home. And what this was, our special ed parents sort of sharing what their child was doing at home, and then hearing what happens in the classroom. And the whole emphasis of the thing was, you know, you have to have this kind of communication, you know, between. So those were very interesting. The wellness, I went to the, the local wellness policy because obviously we've been working on it. Met a very interesting person from Bethlehem who said that their high school program has gotten off the federal program, so that they could once again have bagel sales and things like that, which these new requirements apparently prohibit. And she says much their happiness, their money's actually got better than under the old system. So that's something that, you know, we can talk to Linda about a little bit. But again, the, the law conference was, was really, really well done. You know, they talked about a lot of the rules and regulations that have come down the pike in the last year. Again, really well done, they had great presenters. So all in all, really, if, if you can make these conferences, please try and do it.
It's an up. It really is.
You really, you really bring back, you know, a lot of information that, you know, you can share with the appropriate parties. In fact, I think I sent you a few things already, and I think they...
Barb, what about your recommendation about the later start time? I wasn't at the business meeting.
Oh, yes, 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 oh, that passed overwhelmingly, yeah.
So, and that means that NISBA then goes out and, and supports this. It doesn't mean that it becomes law or anything else, it just means that NISBA will work actively on it.
I just say, Barb, is there anyone in the suburban council that voted against it?
You can't tell, because there's like five hundred people in a room, all with their little yes, no paddles, and you have no idea, you know, unless you have...
So there's no official vote?
No, it's not a one by one, it's just a, all those in favor.
On that first resolution, they did have to head count.
If it's close.
Because it was so close, but if, you know, three quarters of the room or more has their yes paddles up, then they don't count.
I think that would be good information to know, like, if we, if you reach out to them to see if everyone supported it.
Yeah.
Because I don't know why you can't move forward if, you know, if everyone supports it.
Well, I know there's people interested in Bethlehem, people interested in, in Niskiuna, but not board majorities at this point, as far as I've been told. Whether, you know, Lorisville's interest, I don't know, but you can't individualize the vote.
Right.
Now, they made one change from the floor, you know, to our resolution where we had any and all, those words were stricken and just another word was added, so.
Appropriate.
Appropriate, yeah. So it worked out well.
Great job.
Thank you. Anyone else? Teresa?
Um, I had basically a statement that I'm, a meeting for FMS, and one of the things that I brought up was just that, because I have a child there, and I've had a kid that's already gone through, they have, it depends on what house that you're kind of in, that they'll do a team building field trip. So the kids are taken out of school to go bowling, or to go to flight, or to go to whatever for team buildings, so the kids are interacting with one another. And I had just made a statement, and I don't know if anything could be done to further that, but I don't mind my kid getting out of curriculum to go do something with their team, but it should be meaningful. It shouldn't be going to flight like my daughter did. If I want to take my daughter and ten of her friends to flight, I'd like to do that on my own time. Um, she's out of school, missing biology to go to flight, and I don't think that's appropriate. If they're going to take them out and go on a field trip where they're going to go do service, I think that's wonderful, if you're going to do that and they go to a soup kitchen or do whatever along those lines. I just said, I feel like it's really important that if you're going to take a kid out of curriculum, they should be doing something. And I don't want to say it's not worthwhile to go to flight, I'm just thinking that taking them out of school to do so is not, I don't think, appropriate. And then I just wanted to see if I could also get an update as to what's going on with the schoolhouse.
We, our attorney is drafting a memo to share with the board, so that will be coming shortly.
The next board meeting?
Yes, we'll have it for next board meeting.
Has anybody come forward that we know of that can claim the property?
Uh, not at this time.
So all the people that had contacted you were not legit?
You'll see in, in the letter, I've seen a draft of it, it's, it's a little more complicated than that, so it's whether you have real interest in the property or you think you have interest in the property. So, from a legal aspect, do you really have interest in the property? So people have made claims that they, they do, and the question is, do they have a legal claim?
And our attorney is investigating whether they have a legal claim?
Yes, and has explored some options, it's, it's going to require some more discussion in terms of which way the board would like to go with this.
Anyone else? All right. Yes, Linda?
There's one person that wanted to speak.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Do we have a blue sheet or no? Um, unexpected, okay, it's Kim Blaziac? Okay, yeah, come on up.
Um, okay, first of all...
Actually, you showed for the TV.
First of all, for the people that went to NISBA, thank you very much. I don't know if anyone went to the family engagement class, that was us, Kyle Belkenski, who was also the speaker last night. We worked very hard, I'm also the family engagement coordinator for New York State PTA. I get to go to New York next year to do that with you guys, so I'm excited. I just wanted to say a couple things, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. First of all, thank you very much for deciding to give it a little bit... First of all, thank you very much for deciding to give it a little bit of time for the board. I know that they were kind of rumors and that's all they were, is rumors to the public for tonight, but we do appreciate that you're actually going to maybe get some resumes and get some applications because from what we were given, it was a potential and it wasn't a definite, so this was really the official versus public notification of it. I think that's where, Tim, maybe you were coming in with Alan and Sean because we just just seemed to be carried over because no one knew officially until this meeting. Second of all, I'm gonna go off any local PTA and speak strictly as the New York State PTA family engagement coordinator. Last night, we had a speaker, Kyle Belkabitsky, who spoke about family engagement. That's our very big push this year. And she had said that get a parent on your, it's, I don't know if you remember, get a parent on your committees. I would honestly like to see a parent member, if possible, on the committee, even just to sit and listen to the resumes. Because we are the parents that elected these seats and I hate to say that because I, I don't like to say that, but we as the taxpayers and as the voters voted you in to these seats. We would at least like if there's a vacancy and it does happen, to sit in on the process to know a little bit more. Also, as a Board of Directors member for New York State PTA, I have to say, and I'm not gonna be a popular person right now, I'm disappointed because for us, it is just a given where we team build and we come from all over the state. And those of you, and I'm sure all of you by now know me, I have four kids, I do four PTA positions, I also am an advocate on the side for parents. I have no time, but I make time because I took my position for the kids. I take it seriously. That's why I'm that crazy lady that comes to the meetings and speaks and wants fair and backs the teachers like they are fucking rock stars, as it says. Because I took the position for the kids so the kids could get the education, so the kids could get what they need in school, so we could talk about the kids. And when I'm sitting here tonight, seriously, listening to everyone, well, I'm not sure, I understand about time constraints. Of all people, I totally 100% get it. But you are a board of different people who need to work together for our students in Gilderlingh, not because you might not want to show up or you don't want to go to a meeting. And I understand because I have four kids who literally sit there when I have to go to a meeting and say, you have another meeting, Mom? Next week, I'm going two days early to New York State PTA convention for a four hour Board of Directors meeting and then a three hour team building meeting. And I can tell you, we see each other twice a year and we all pick up and we all have different political views, backgrounds, everything, but we're there for the kids. And I would like to see this board actually, and if you don't want to hire this guy, that's fine. I will offer right now as Board of Directors member for New York State PTA to bring in someone that we work with to work with the board. Because I can tell you, we do not like PowerPoints and this stuff. We are talkers, we are doers, we are work together. We are get down, write the stuff down, figure it out, we're gonna get together and you know what? If we have differences, great. We respect the differences because everyone is entitled to that, but we work together for the kids. And I'm sorry, I, of all people, don't want to see a board meeting gone, but if you need a board meeting to actually get yourself together and work better for the kids, take board meeting. Take it. Every one of you should be a yes. And if it's, it's already a knife that's out there, but work for our kids. Get along, work together. That's, that's just what you have to do. I'm sorry if it sounds so negative and I'm not trying to be that way, but I cannot even believe that there's even a question at this point. Because you need to do it. You are in this position for the kids of Gilderlingh, for all seven schools, for every kid that goes through, so they can walk through and they get what they need. And you guys have budget talks, you have public talks, you have all this stuff coming up. And you need to be one cohesive unit. Yes, you can definitely disagree because that's what boards do and you need to do that because there's something wrong if all of you are on the same page 24/7. But you need to do it respectfully. You need to be able to do it where you're working together and you know about, hey, how was your daughter the other day? Hey, how's the move going? Hey, how's this? Like it or not, you guys are stuck together. And I, I would love to see that that meeting is canceled for the public so that you guys could actually work together. Thank you.
Yep. Hi. So now, we do not have a need for executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Seema, second, Barbara, all those in favor?